Okay, yes, welcome everyone. We're having a budget workshop with the road commissioners today. Sorry we got started a little earlier, but now that we've got everything up in the videos running, we're just now going over District One and Will is presenting his plans for District One paving and special projects, right?
Yeah, and like I was saying, I did talk to the gentleman that owns the property, but by the time we got done off there last year, I just didn't have time, so I got to meet with him right off and hopefully we can go in a little bit more. We just need a little bit more room for snow because the gentleman that lives in there now is there year-round and he complains a lot, so that's...
Is all of that paved now or is this paving some area? I've been up there a few times on Willow, but...
No, that's not paved.
It's not, but you're paving it?
It's paved now, but we're just gonna do a shim over it.
Okay, alright.
Shim and overlay, yeah.
And then, uh, where's the...
That's forty-six thousand for that?
Yeah.
And a hundred and forty-three to finish West Shore Drive?
Yeah.
And that finishing takes us to Willow Street?
Yeah, Willow Street.
Nothing is done beyond that?
No, no, I got that right, I got that right here.
Oh, down low, okay.
So then I got Hawk Road, um, the poor people on Hawk Road, I've been telling them for four years I'd do something, so I thought that this year would be a good time for me to go in there and pave that. So, um, I got, um, the first, there's a, there's like a, right as you pull in the road, there's a butt joint a little bit down, we're gonna pull the old hot top up, I'm just gonna do it myself. And then I have a covert to replace at the end of the, at the end of the road at 109. I mentioned it to you guys about doing that and I'm gonna have to bring some gravel up because the road now has settled down pretty great, so we're gonna build the road up a little bit. Um, and they're gonna just shim and overlay that. And then the last section of West Shore Drive, we're gonna pave and then we should be done in there.
So you're gonna do both coats in this price?
Yes.
Yes, okay, and so it's gonna be ground as well as, or you just...
No, we're just, that's, the piece of road is real good, so we're just gonna shim and overlay that section.
That's a hundred and seven thousand?
Okay, yeah, we have to add those all up.
Yeah, I was gonna say so.
One oh seven three forty-five.
It looks like three hundred thirty-three thousand, is that some rate?
Yeah.
No, that's not with any reserve or anything, you have no reserves.
I think I have, I wanna say I have forty thousand.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, I think so. I think I have about forty thousand left.
And then twenty thousand increase to summertime budget?
Right.
Okay, so, um, so last year your budget was two fifty for paving, so...
And I think I, I think I got another hundred last year, I believe.
Or I think it was fifty last year, wasn't it? Fifty and fifty for both of you.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So you each had three or two fifty?
No, it was two fifty, it was two hundred and we added fifty and fifty.
Whatever, and I had, I know I had quite a bit that I rolled over, I believe.
So, uh, road, I don't see it, I don't think that's...
I'm confused, all of these paving projects, these, if you add all these total numbers, they're over two fifty, but you're adding the reserve in?
Yeah, my, well, they added, did you guys add the...
I just added all these numbers from, I mean, assuming that one twenty-eight, four ninety-five, right?
Yeah.
Added each one of these numbers and it's over two fifty, what are they supposed to total?
I got three thirty-three, I can recheck it, three hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Then you minus out forty-one.
Four projects.
And what are you minusing out, David?
Well, if you minus out the forty-one, five oh six, fifty-six, which should be the unexpended balance, which shows right here, okay, for paving, surfacing for District One.
Oh, so that's a carry forward?
That's a carry forward.
Is that...
How much forty-one?
That's what he's got right now.
How much is that forty-one?
Says forty-one thousand five hundred, five oh six, fifty-six.
Okay, and that's a new report, you just got that?
That's what I just got it.
And we're not gonna have anything else against that this year, Will?
What's that?
Anything else between now and June that goes that account?
No.
So you're gonna save this to do those projects, okay?
So three thirty-seven, what's that number again, David?
Forty-one thousand five hundred and six fifty-six.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna re-add this just to be sure.
That gets me to two ninety-one, seven ninety-one.
Okay.
But let's...
Why, if you, are you adding up the project price too?
I'm, I'm doing from...
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so that's where you're getting the number from, just the paving alone, if you add up the fifteen thousand...
So where's the one twenty-eight being paid out of?
That's gonna come out of my, that's to pave the road.
Okay, what's the, what's the fifteen thousand then?
That's, will come out of my summertime.
Fine, alright.
Okay, because...
Forty-four ninety-five.
Okay.
And I did the same thing, so the paving numbers...
A lot of the times you'd pull out the same column. No, because you can't, that's why we thought that's what you do. Yeah, because it says paving and reconstruction.
We didn't do that in the past, we've did...
Okay, so you're just gonna add it into your summertime.
Who's giving the work on shouldering versus paving? Thank you, you do the shouldering?
We do the shouldering.
I see, that makes sense.
It's cheaper.
Question, so now I've come up with two hundred and forty-five thousand, four ninety-seven.
Yeah, that's to pave.
Alright, so that's perfect. The only, so the first one is the only one that you don't use the word pave, but that's the one...
Oh, sorry, sorry.
But that's the one twenty-eight number?
Yeah.
Alright, so Tom, now we're at two forty-five, four ninety-seven, so we're under the two fifty.
Is, is that...
Just paving.
That's just paving and is that utilizing the carry forward that David's talking about?
Well, no, he would, that would give him about forty thousand leeway if something came up with any of them.
I don't wanna drop the account number.
Well, no, he's asking for two fifty and he's come up with...
You're asking for the two fifty.
These are the projects, you'll end up with two ninety.
Yes.
And if you have some leftover, it will roll through.
Right.
Okay, and you have enough, all these other numbers are your summer and you're all set?
Yeah, that only comes up to eighty-five thousand.
Fine, and how much is in that budget?
Uh, it's one seventeen now, I believe.
That's with the twenty thousand dollar increase?
Uh, that'd be one thirty.
So, right, you're, District One Road Maintenance is a hundred twenty-nine thousand twelve eighty-two, that's what you normally get, right? Is that right?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Yeah, okay.
Could, could you just redo this for me? Put two columns out here, one is the paving budget, the other is what, uh...
Summer maintenance.
Be general, general maintenance.
So you want me to...
Just so I can see what roads are drawing from paving?
Okay.
How much from summer maintenance, we can total it up and we can see what it is. Fair enough, I, I think we got the numbers, but it would be good to have that for the record because if I go back two months from now, I'm not...
I was, I was doing the same thing, I thought it was all clumped together.
I'm looking at my laptop.
No, that's what mine says.
I have my laptop.
Yeah, we're not on yours yet.
You donate it right now, we'll see if we can get that done, that would be good, alright?
No, no, that's great, so, um, so the one twenty-nine, that's what you're getting now.
I thought it was, I thought it was...
What's the one twenty-nine amount?
It's one seventeen. I think we're one seventeen.
That's what's spent, well, yeah, that's what's left over, so the twenty thousand left in that account. Eighty-three percent of that, eighty-four percent of the budget.
That's road repair and maintenance, is that what he's doing, the shouldering on?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and you're asking for an extra twenty for that, correct, yeah? Um, you know, you've only got twenty thousand left in that, that line item right now.
Yeah, by the time I get done sweeping and everything, I'll, I'll be gone.
So you don't think you'll have anything left in that line this year, or little?
After this, after...
By June you won't?
No, I won't, by the time we sweep and...
No carry forward?
Fix and, no.
So, um, I know the, the finance committee's gonna want the same thing, so I was asking now, justification with the extra twenty.
For summer?
For the summer, there was something I mean.
Uh, well, that's what that maintenance is on the back.
That, but that's, that's why, for, for the extra stuff right here?
Right.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. And also the increases in the wages and stuff would probably be, um, a good reason why also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, where are we now?
Alright, so we've gone over everything with District One, we're gonna throw in an Excel spreadsheet for Tom.
So, the plowing, did you guys decide to go up on that at all?
Yeah, that's on mine, it should be...
I didn't add it to mine, I didn't have a chance.
First page did they increase twenty thousand?
Right, oh, right here, yeah, 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 it kinda blended in with everything else.
Oh, that's winter time budget, that's plowing?
Yeah.
That makes sense, twenty thousand dollar increase, how do you stand so far? Oh, that's the one we're potentially overdrawn with.
Because I think I, I think I went over from the la, what, eight, I think it was eighteen, I think.
Uh, District Two, you're at twenty-six and District One's at eighteen.
Yeah.
Okay, now, I know you've mentioned that means that I've told you not to go up on this line item, okay? Um, I've told you that because of the last few years, we've not gone over our fifteen percent, okay? So you don't increase your budget if you don't go over that number. This year we went over that number by quite a bit.
Yeah.
Now, I understand we have to raise this budget, okay? Um, especially seeing that we're raising rates at, at a rapid incline, okay? Because over the last four years, you know, um, there's been, I think it's over twenty dollars an hour, some of these pieces of equipment have got for raises, you have to compensate for that, correct?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so, right now you're negative twenty-six thousand, you're negative eighteen thousand and could snow tonight, you'll be twenty thousand dollars in the hole tonight, correct?
Yeah.
Does twenty thousand dollars get you where you need to be?
Well, we, well, we haven't got to the rates yet, we, we...
I was gonna say, how much are the rates going up for next year? Because then the budget should go up, uh, based on rate increase and the material increase for salt and sand?
Yes and no.
Because the stockpile's a separate budget.
Yeah, because the problem is, is every year's different, the hours you put in, this and that, you're just going to average on, you know, every year.
I know, it just seems to me that, um, there's nothing, there's nothing you're going to do to, to reduce the cost, the actual cost of plowing.
Okay.
It, it's gonna be what it is, you set the rates and it's based on the storms, how bad they are, how many there are. I would err on the other side myself, I would, I would make those healthy budgets so we don't have to go back to a special town meeting. And if we don't spend them, is my understanding, they drop back on...
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Well, the twenty doesn't, doesn't, that just gets you to where you are now.
Exactly, that's what I'm talking about.
And so, I would err, I would be very conservative, I'd, I'd, I'd not load it up, but I'd put more money on that budget so we don't have to have a special town meeting unless we have a horrible winter.
Well, what I'm trying to say is, we didn't get any snow in November, like we always do.
Right.
December we didn't get crap, okay? January was a blockbuster, okay, really, we, how many big storms we get this year, three?
Three or four.
Big storms, we didn't get one ice storm this year.
No.
Okay, this has been a pretty dismal winter overall.
We had a hundred inches of snow.
Yeah, but we got it, got it all at once and then, you know, it was a bunch of foreign storms, you know, everybody knows a foreign storm will cost just as much as a one-foot storm.
Oh, yeah, some of the icy storms.
So what I'm trying to get to here is, because of the increases in the budget over the last four to five years in, in rates, um, this year in a miniscule, really a miniscule year of snow and weather, okay? Is twenty thousand dollars gonna cut it if we have a bad winter next year?
No.
Absolutely not.
You should probably double that number.
So, I, I would at least put thirty, thirty-five thousand, if not forty, in those accounts. If we don't spend it, it goes back on the general fund.
Yeah, I mean, like Tom says, err on it.
But, we're, we're, because we were the other day trying to figure out how, we went over our fifteen percent, correct?
Yeah.
Now, where, does it say that we're allowed to pay them after we go over the fifteen percent? We're, we should've had a, a special town meeting like ASAP, okay? Because in the past, that's what we've done.
Does the twenty we're over, is that, um, before you take into account the fifteen percent you're allowed to go over?
No, we're, we're allowed to go over, essentially it was fourteen thousand, so you're six thousand...
Six thousand over there.
Six thousand over the fifteen percent, so, we don't wanna get, because, you know, you're so close to spring.
Right.
And it's like, you know, you, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a special town meeting in, uh, what, the eighteenth?
Nineteenth.
Okay, but by then, we could be, you know, one snowstorm away from being, um, you know, from six to eighteen thousand dollars over, over the fifteen percent.
The problem with being, uh, extra generous on the budget is it ends up in the tax rate.
Yeah.
Um, one thing we could do is increase it by an amount, whatever that amount is, but taking an additional amount to be funded from undesignated reserves as needed. So that it doesn't go on the tax rate. Uh, and let's say you bump it thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And take another, appropriate another fifty from undesignated reserve.
We're doing that anyways, we do that anyways at the end of the year when, when we take all our numbers, right? And, and then we, we just...
I'm trying to avoid the need for a special town meeting or for cutting people off. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Well, we, we have to, unless we budget enough money, we go over that fifteen percent, you have to put a special town meeting. You can't just go into the reserves because we have to vote to do that.
No, but you could, you could fund, correct me if I'm wrong, fund the budget from two sources. One is tax revenue, the other is undesignated reserves. And so, the, that portion from undesignated reserves doesn't come from tax money. But they're appropriated and authorized to spend the total of the two to the extent you need it. And if you don't need the money from undesignated reserves, it goes back there.
Yes.
So, we're gonna do that anyways.
Well, it, it makes sense, I, I see where you're going with it, but when we go to commit taxes in September, we would still have to account for that restricted undesignated fund.
Yeah.
Amount that you put in that second article.
As a, as an amount that we would have to fund.
Yeah, because we're, we're allowed to use...
Hold on, not from taxation, but from, from undesignated fund?
That's, that's fine, I just, I'm, what I'd like, I think we ought to fund those budgets in a healthy way, but, but in trying to get them to the level that may make sense to avoid future special town meetings, have a portion of that funded from undesignated reserves so we don't have to put it into the tax rate.
But, what we're gonna do is, say we increase forty thousand, forty thousand, so we'll just use those numbers, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Eighty thousand dollars, that line goes up, yes, it goes on the tax rate, right? But what we'll end up having to do is because, you know, we have money in our undesignated fund, we'll use, we'll take an extra eighty out of that to offset it, correct? That'd be doing the same thing, because that's what we do anyways.
But wouldn't we need, uh, a warrant to take that money out of undesignated?
Yeah.
So one way or another...
We do it anyways.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to tie the use of that to the paving.
So you wanna, we're gonna raise and appropriate, if, if we stick to the twenty thousand more, the article essentially says to raise and appropriate, if we're at ninety-six, eight now, we'd raise and appropriate thirty thousand more because we think that's a close number.
Yeah.
And then he wants to appropriate up to an additional twenty thousand dollars out of undesignated for the purpose of over fifteen percent of necessary. One of the things I found out from legal real quick yesterday was that you can write in the article, you know, so much for winter maintenance and allocate the fifteen percent right in the article, so you don't have to have a special. So there's another way around it, just so you know, you fund it from wherever you want.
But also turn around and when you do the article, put the stockpile in with the, uh...
Well, if you combine it, then you probably never go over.
Then you, then you, then you don't have to worry about the fifteen percent because you're adding the stockpile number two of, which it should be because that's part of plowing and sanding.
Fifteen percent, uh, that's by statute, right?
Yes.
Can that apply to the stockpile or is it just for plowing?
If you put it in the same article.
Well, it has to be the use of winter maintenance.
That's part of winter maintenance of sanding roads, so, we're not, we're not, when we do the article, it's not part of that.
I think we have the same objective.
Yeah.
We'll sort it out in the wording of the article, we just need a number from you guys.
I just don't wanna load it all into taxes.
Right, mine kinda doesn't make sense.
I think we can offset that anyways.
Okay, however we do it, I just, you know, let's...
So what number do we decide on? So, they talked with twenty thousand over, you mentioned thirty, David.
I mean, thirty's one twenty-six, eight eleven, so I mean...
The prob, let, let's think about this real quick before we do this, okay? We can add twenty or thirty thousand to it, if we combine those two budgets, okay? Our fifteen percent will be a lot larger.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so before we over, overdo this number, we may not have to.
And there's absolutely nothing in that?
To me, it's of no consequence to appropriate an additional amount from undesignated. It doesn't hurt anyone because number one, you're not gonna tax them, number two, they're only gonna spend what they have to spend. It's not like we're giving them more in a budget that they need, they're only gonna spend what you need to spend. So, I'm just trying to avoid, you know, having to go back to a special town meeting for something that probably most people, I, there's nothing they can do, they gotta approve it.
Well, no, they don't have to approve it.
But, well, if they don't, then what, are roads going to...
No, you go back and you do it again, but, uh, well, my suggestion is this, add the thirty thousand apiece. Okay, combine, combine the winter time...
The stockpile.
Stockpile and both, I, I, can we do both District One and Two on the same winter time article?
I'll have to look.
Because that's really what we're gonna do to combine all three of them in the same article, that way there, it applies to both of them.
Right.
The fifteen percent?
The fifteen percent, so what it does is you just added a hundred and fifty-some thousand dollars, fifteen percent of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, what?
I, I guess so long as we can...
That gives us a lot of cushion, that, that's gonna give us close to sixty, probably seventy thousand between the thirty thousand, maybe sixty, um...
Yeah, so at one twenty-six, fifteen percent...
We have the numbers, we'll get some advice and...
Yes.
I guess, let me, I, I know what you wanna do, give me a, a data.
Find two.
Alright.
Does that sound fine?
It sounds fine to me, I mean, you fine with that?
Yeah, but we would, so every year you'd have to take your sand out of that, out of that number, so you'd have...
That's why I'm hesitant to agree with you.
What do you, what do you mean?
Well, we buy sand, we take it out of that number.
You still have a separate stockpile line.
Well, it wouldn't be one lump number, right?
No, no, the article, you have, uh, count, duh, 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 okay?
Total of all three.
And it would total all three, okay? You still, when you pull out a stockpile, you still pull an account, one oh five, whatever, dah, 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 it's still stockpile.
Still stockpile, we're still building it out of stock.
What are you talking about combining then?
In the article, I believe, stock, the winter time maintenance and stockpile's in a separate article, correct?
No, I believe it's the same article separated out, because remember we went to legal?
But I think, yeah, but I thought there was, there was something else added and that's why we couldn't use the winter time.
No, let me find it.
The fifteen percent.
Okay, it says to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, I'm gonna round up, four hundred thousand dollars and to appropriate X amount from L.R.A.P. to be expended as follows. Winter maintenance is just District One, winter maintenance ninety-six, eight, summer maintenance one seventeen, and then paving reconstruction two fifty. And then there's a completely different article a few down, that is raise and appropriate X amount for sand and salt, stockpile and public works building grounds.
Okay, the reason why we can't combine those is because we have the stockpile mounted in with the, the shed down there. That stockpile should be included into the winter time.
When you're saying, when you're saying combining, are you trying to take fifteen percent of the total article?
Yes.
Okay, then, and that's the question we just sent to legal a week, a week ago, and what you need to do is, you need to not separate it, you need to take out the words "to be expended as follows." Because if you just say to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate three hundred and eighty thousand for winter maintenance, summer, summer maintenance, and maybe take out paving, then they can spend three eighty-eight, but if you say to expend it as follows, the fifteen percent is only on the ninety-six, eight.
Why can't you just do the lines as, oh, it's summertime, winter...
And paving.
Well, that, well, that's, you know, you, 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 winter time, summertime and paving could be on their own line.
Well, then they could spend more paving. Anything to do with paving and summertime in with winter.
It already is, Tom.
It already is?
But it's broken down, it says to be expended as follows.
Which, but, but it, it creates restrictions on each of those numbers.
Correct.
Which we wanna keep.
Yes, because if not, they could say, well, it didn't snow all winter, I'm gonna use that towards paving.
No.
Right.
No, 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 no.
Why not just separate them out, winter maintenance, summer maintenance, paving?
Because all I'm worried, I'm not worried about the summertime paving and, and summertime maintenance, I'm worried about right now, trying to figure out how we can combine the salt pile with the winter time so we can, we can expand that fifteen percent.
So we'll do winter maintenance, the higher amount, District One, winter maintenance, the high amount, District Two, and we'll put the sand, the stock shed in that same article.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Why not?
Got it, I know what you're doing. Let me bring it to Tom, I got it, I know what he's talking about.
Okay.
And it makes, it makes sense because he's putting stockpile into the winter.
Makes a bigger number, your fifteen percent just got bigger.
Whole number's not gonna be, I only get concerned about the big number, that's all.
I, I don't, I...
Still separate, but it's still a separate line item, right?
Yeah.
It'll still be separate.
Everything was still the count number.
I don't, all I, number one, I don't wanna have to come back to town, the special town meeting. And number two, I don't wanna mix what I'd call discretionary money, summer maintenance and other things that are discretionary with winter maintenance, which is different by the weather.
What I just did was I just gave them a lot larger comfort zone without increasing the tax rate.
But you're correct, Tom, the sand and stockpile, which we're gonna put in with the winter maintenance article to get a higher number for the fifteen percent, is not a discretionary fund. They either put sand up and they, you know, they feed it out all winter.
Something about summer maintenance.
They can't use it for anything else, and that's what Tom's concerned with.
So what I, what I'm trying to do here is make it so that we add...
I got it.
We add, and then we add a percentage higher, that way there, we don't have to put this huge number ahead to tax people for if we have a lenient winter.
Could someone just make clear at the end of this? This is what we had in the current year budget, then how much we increased it by at this upcoming special meeting versus what we're gonna have next year?
Yes.
Okay, so I can see what the changes in those numbers.
If we get out of five, I'll have it ready for you before your meeting.
Oh, okay, fine, it doesn't have to be then, but, but I guess we gotta approve this tonight?
I mean, I would like to talk about it at the Sluggman's meeting, yes.
Okay, alright.
Alright, so, we're good, I think we've done that, so we need to hear about Will, about Adam's projects and then talk rates.
Yep.
Okay.
Are you all set, Will, are you good?
Yeah, you guys are good.
Good.
But so that, so we're gonna go up thirty on this winter?
Yes.
Both accounts, so that'd be sixty thousand overall.
Let me just write that down so I know.
I just, I gotta say, if we've had such a light winter, what makes you think thirty is gonna be enough if we have a bad winter?
That's why I...
A little bit last year.
Huh?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand last year and we had a lot of ice storms.
That's why...
Well, no, I'm just reacting to...
So that's why...
Characterization of this winter.
So, being as lenient as it was this winter, okay? We just added sixty thousand dollars there budget. On top of that, we've added, I don't know, it has to be twelve or fifteen dollars more than, uh, see, one fifty-nine, uh...
We got a hundred and fifty-six in stockpile, did that number change for this year?
One fifty-nine.
Nope.
That's another twenty-two thousand.
Okay, so that adds another twenty-two thousand on top of that before we have to go to special town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, by doing that, we don't have to worry about taxation.
I guess we'll get, if it isn't enough next week.
Wait, what'd you say?
Add more to it.
What'd you say?
One fifty-six, one twenty-five.
You asked what it's gonna change?
Yeah. Yeah.
No, it should, I don't even, I think you still think there's like a hundred, thirty dollars.
A lot of money in there, yeah.
That's a hundred.
You didn't put in for increase for that.
No, no, I mean, I've only hauled in six extra loads of salt this year.
All right, so let's go on to District Two.
You've got a hundred and five thousand still left in that account.
Adam, what do we have here?
Uh, Buzzard Road, which, trying, I've worked on last year, well, this year, I get it last year, prepping, and still have a lot more to do. So I'm gonna get that ground paved, completely finished paving. My numbers are there for paving and the summer maintenance cost. And then, uh.
How long's that road?
That road is.
Four thousand feet?
Forty-one seventy.
What is that? How many, how many feet?
Uh, just over a mile.
Just over, that's why thirty-five hundred, something, a mile, something like that. So it's a mile?
Yep.
Um, you've chose to reclaim it?
Yes.
Sure, it's, uh, what are we talking?
My road, Buzzard Road.
Buzzard Road, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's in bad shape.
It is, there's no.
Who needs it?
Yeah, the road's like this.
It's like that, we have, I mean, the shoulders, I bet that road's not even.
It was always a road that, you know, 'cause I'd rebuilt that last section out through there, we ground that whole section, 'cause it was junk, and we were just, we couldn't get the funds to do.
All right.
Yep.
Country road.
Uh, county road, county road.
County road, rather, yeah.
Um, well, this county road, so county road needs some culverts done, I wanna do some prep work for paving, for finishing the second section that I haven't done next year. So this way, everything settles and does what it needs to do before I put a hot top on it. Um, and then finish topping the paving that I've done already. So that new pavement will have, be a hundred percent finished this year. And then.
Yeah, so the estimated cost, so you got two, okay, you got paving, so that's.
To finish paving's about seventy, that's off the top, he looked at it real quick, I called him, and he's like, roughly to finish doing the paving on what you've done.
The twenty-three is to get everything ready.
Is to get the other section ready on the road that I haven't, those culvert, like you cut culvert.
Yep, yep.
Finish all those culverts, get the driveways done, so the prep work for the next year's.
And the seventy-two is to go over that.
Is to go over what I did this year.
Okay.
So that'll finish up what I just did.
Okay.
Gets that project completely finished, nothing's left open, done. And then they can tie into that when they work on the rest of it. Trying to finish up things, like you guys said, let's get it done and finished, and, you know.
Yeah.
It'll be just too much money and not enough time for me to get that road a hundred percent ready for hot top this year, you know? The amount of the work I gotta do. And then, Peacock Point, Youngs Ridge, those are roads I paved last year, I wanna get those finished up, shouldered, done, so they're a hundred percent done. And that's the paving for my two fifty and my leftover money.
So, okay, so, the seventeen thousand's gonna come out of the two fifty, right? And the estimate cost, that's just for prepping it for paving?
Uh, the estimated cost, that's for doing the shoulders.
Doing the shoulders, okay. So, the cost of, 'cause you're talking ripping up that section of road, you know, are you grinding it, or what are you doing? On Peck Road, or Peacock, or me?
Uh, Peacock's all done, sorry.
Oh, Peacock, sorry. I'm getting pecking Peacock.
Uh, trust me, again, I confuse myself.
Yeah.
Uh, so Peacock, we already paved, we reclaimed a base. Point, we reclaimed a base, point's gonna get finished, we didn't do the circle.
So that's the shoulders.
Shoulders and paving.
And overlay.
Yep.
Okay, I was, I was on the wrong road.
Yeah, so point, we didn't grind the circle, 'cause the circle's in pretty good shape, and it was the cost, it wasn't cost effective.
Shim and overlay.
We're gonna shim and overlay that. So that will be a hundred percent finished. Uh, Youngs Ridge, what I did, um, we're just gonna, the short section from the vet to the schoolhouse, it's just gonna be shim and overlay, and then a top, the rest of it going up to the top of the hill. So that road will be completely finished.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Because where the curbs are, it was in pretty good shape, between the two curbs, was in pretty good shape, there's only one little hotspot that we gotta grind down, and the rest of that can be just shim and overlaid, and it wasn't.
We shipped and overlaid that back in the day.
Yeah, and it's held up pretty well.
Yeah.
So, it wasn't worth grinding it, then you would've gotten into curbs and all that stuff.
So what's the total paving here?
Three hundred and thirty thousand.
And, did I hear some of that's gonna be funded with the carryover?
Yep, I have eighty-three thousand dollars left in carryover, so I should have a three thousand dollars, three thousand, forty.
So you're back to two fifty.
My two fifty, and yep, so I'll be back, I'll spend every penny of my paving budget on that.
Okay.
Great.
And then my special project is Peck Road.
Okay, Peck Road.
Uh, just another page? Is that Peck Road?
Yeah, so, I have Peck on my regular sheet, 'cause I'm planning on, as soon as the roads are open, I'm heading right over to Peck, I gotta fix the drainage over there.
Okay, so you got two Peck roads here.
Right, so my regular budget, I threw it in there because I have to get over there pretty much right away.
So.
Major drainage issues and stuff, and I'm planning on taking that out of my summer budget.
So the thirty-one thousand on this page here is coming out of the two fifty?
The thirty-one thousand's coming out of my summer budget.
Oh, summer budget?
Summer budget.
Yeah, okay.
See, 'cause I have a, so I wanna take that out of my summer budget.
So you're doing paving out of your summer budget?
No, this is culverts, cross culverts, drainage issues.
Hold on, this is reclaim and pave?
Yes, that's on my special.
It's a different one, see, there's two of them.
I thought that's where you went.
We got pecked twice.
I was a little confused too, but.
Okay, so.
Sorry.
All right, okay.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, so.
For future reference, put it all on one page for us, would you?
Well, I didn't want to put that on the special project, 'cause I don't need the money for my special, my special project.
We'll get his in the same spreadsheet and.
Yeah, I'm just joking.
Yep.
So, what's going on with this Peck Road on?
Peck Road is partially washed away, there's a good section that's probably, from that wall to probably the clock that's missing of hot top. Um, the road's very deteriorated, I spoke to.
It's mushed away.
I talked to Tony, I bet him and Bernie paved that twenty-five, thirty years ago.
Yeah.
And it's only had one paving job done in thirty years.
Right, we, we ripped up.
You ripped up a small section of it.
I took a whole section out because the whole road was mushing, and I, I box cut.
Yep.
I don't know, about five, six hundred feet, something like that.
A new culvert there.
And we put a new culvert, box cut it, 'cause it was all mush, and I couldn't grind it because the stuff underneath was garbage. And I think that's part of the original road.
Yeah.
And, um, but beyond that, going up to the hill was all alligator and.
Yeah, the, the whole road, and just major disrepair.
One problem up there is, the water comes off the hill so hard that we gotta keep up on the culverts, keep them clean, 'cause what happens is all the leaves come down, poof, and then it washes off the road.
And the culverts are gonna get all upsized.
Yeah.
Everything that's under the, needs to be upsized, so they just can't handle the amount of water coming off them.
So this one thirty is, uh, in addition to the two fifty?
Yes. Um, and that way, that road will get done properly, finished, done.
So that's gonna shim and overlay, I don't know, so what do you, what are we doing?
We're gonna reclaim as much as we can, I've talked to him, we, I gotta meet up with him again, this is worst case scenario, is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, um, for paving. Worst case scenario.
That's worth reclaiming.
Reclaiming it.
Now, I mean, you do what you feel, I guess, but, I mean, the first section of road isn't all that bad.
Very bad.
The first, first part of it is.
And then there's a little bit that's okay.
There's probably a good, I don't know, around the corner and.
Yeah, but there's some major potholes in there now.
Well, there's sinkholes in there.
And there's also potholes.
Yeah, I know, but there's sinkholes too there.
Yeah, there's one sinkhole that.
I don't even know what you get into when you get into that.
Well, that's what we gotta find out. I'm probably gonna cut that out, see what's going on, and get that filled, and, it's hard to say what's under that, I don't know how that road was built, you know, that's, I don't wanna, I just wanna do it right.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, um, I think, like Tom and I were talking, you know, if we don't have to reclaim it, you know, 'cause the problem is, when you reclaim it, you lose your hot top.
But they just put their old hot top back on, right.
Well, you do and you don't, it's not what it was.
Right. But the problem is, is like, you shim and overlay a road like that, it's just gonna crack, you walk down new bridge.
Well, but you're also looking at it like, when was the last time that road was paved? You said thirty years ago.
Well, that's it, thirty years ago, and it's gonna last another thirty.
If you.
Do it this way.
You go and do a heavy shim and overlay on the first part of it, okay, um, that might save you enough money to be able to do more of the road, you know what I mean, somewhere else.
Right.
You know, 'cause like you said, the last time it was paved was thirty years ago, if you put a shim and overlay, you might get another twenty-five out of it. But, it all depends, if you wanna do that, it's fine, I mean, uh, we're talking a hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred.
What's, what's the cost differential between a shim and overlay and a reclaiming for a mile?
You just minus off the reclaim, right?
Yeah, you just minus off the reclaim.
That's pretty much what they put back on anyway.
I have it somewhere.
Yeah.
It's not, I have it, 'cause I have it.
I just find that, a lot of these, a lot of the times when you do that, you know, you've got four inches of hot top already there.
Yeah.
Then you reclaim it out, and you only put back three, you know?
I forget what my paving thing is, but it's probably twenty, thirty grand.
You know.
Twenty, thirty grand.
Maybe. But I mean, have you been on that road, Tom? Please drive on it.
It's some very bad spots.
You'd, you'd understand what, how bad the road.
I'm not disputing that, what I'm, and I don't have a problem with these budgets, but what I wanna see is, um, a survey done for the entire town, before we have another budget. So, the question is, how best to do that, and do we need to appropriate money for that? But, I, I, go ahead, yeah?
Well, how adept do you wanna get with that?
Well, I, look, this is not my business, but I would love to know, that when you guys are coming in here, what we're looking at is part of a broader plan of, based on the condition of our roads, and some schedule of when they need to be attended to, that these amounts need to be expended, expended now. I don't, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have that information, all I've got is a list of roads you've brought in, and there's no indication of what the rest of the town looks like.
So, this is, this is the way I look at it, I don't, I don't wanna revert back the day when I was road commissioner, okay, 'cause we had a lot of that, a lot of people who thought they were smarter than the road commissioner, okay? Um, not saying that's what you, you're, you're.
That's not what I'm understanding, David, as a matter of fact, I know I'm not.
Well, no, but I'm just, just, okay, we elect these guys and make these decisions, at the same time, I do believe that it would be helpful for them.
Yeah, but they elect us also to prepare the budget, and.
And that's what we're doing.
Yeah, I know, but, but what I'm saying is.
Or maybe we need more insight.
I, I need more information in order to make informed decisions.
Then it's up to us, then it's up to us to do that, okay? But at the same time, we also gotta look at it, okay, yes, we got the RSMF, whatever, you know, they're gonna be, they're supposed to start doing that here surely, right, guys?
Yes, trying to get through budget season, 'cause Jennifer's very busy.
We've gotta play a happy medium here, okay, before we, this road assessment thing, I think it'd be good for everybody, because it would make it easier for them to make their argument.
All I'm trying to do, David, is I wanna make sure that we, we, we put in place funding to make sure that's done, before we develop, go through another budget cycle.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's what I'm looking for. I, I, I'm not trying, I don't wanna second guess what's done here.
Well, that's.
We have, can we do that?
I, I think there are some, I'm sure that we could probably get a firm to do it.
I mean, I know we have. I mean, it's a bigo.
I'm just gonna say that. They may do it.
All right. So then, I know what you're saying, so, that's calm.
It's a toughie, because there isn't an engineer in this world's gonna walk up to a road and say, "yeah, okay, that, all we're gonna have to do," an engineer, okay, an actual engineer, road engineer, without doing core samples and everything else.
Well, David, you, you guys know this stuff, and I'm sitting here listening to the conversation.
Yeah.
And you're kinda saying, "well, does that need to be reclaimed?" You're saying, "it doesn't," he says, "it does."
Oh, no, no, I.
What do I do with that? Do I just kinda defer it to you, to say?
You gotta elect the road commissioner, I didn't, I'm just a selectman asking questions.
Yeah, but what, his decisions have a direct impact on the town's finances and, and the tax rate.
Yep.
And that is, that's our responsibility, and no disrespect.
And I'm gonna argue that point, okay, for the simple reason is, you know, whether or not these guys are qualified for their job or not, that's not, the town of act is Sunday.
I'm assuming they are, I'm not questioning that.
The town of act, when they voted them in, says they are, whether they are or not, okay? But we're supposed to be taking their word for it. The problem we've had over the many years, back when I was road commissioner and everything else, is when you get no, no nothings, not, I'm not saying any of us, I'm saying, no nothings, and come in and start telling everybody how to do their job, okay? Now, we can have somebody come in and say, "what, these roads should be done, this and that," it's fine, I have no problem with that, but I do not wanna undermine the road commissioner's role, okay?
Are you suggesting, do you think I'm doing that?
We can.
You think I'm doing that?
No, I, I think with the agreement with the road commissioners, I do believe that it could be good for both the selectmen, the town, and the.
The town, that's right.
For them, because it makes it easier for them to argue the articles, okay? Now, he doesn't have to say, well, actually, he can throw a piece of paper out and say, "hey, this is what they recommend, I need this money." It makes it a more arguable point for him to have that. Now, I'm arguing on your side of it right now, because that, it's good both ways, but I just wanna make sure we don't undermine that these are elected officials, and.
I don't think.
When we do this.
Neither one of us feel that way.
That's not the point, David, for me, I have, you're the road commissioners, I understand that. This represents, if I just add it up, about a quarter of the municipal budget in paving, in paving, and about, maybe, maybe twenty percent of the municipal budget. And, there's very little information for me to understand what that line, what that line ought to be, and what is gonna be required, what's gonna be required over the next so many years, and how to approach this in a way that we don't end up going like this. Significant increases or decreases, especially when we're talking about what our undesignated reserve balances are, how to use them, there's gonna be a call, I suspect, people are gonna wanna see tax rate reduction, which is fine, but I think we need this information on the table, so that we can make informed decisions about what to do with these resources. That's, you know, that's how my mind works.
Oh, I understand.
No, no reflection on you guys, please, and, and, you know, I'm sorry that that was even raised, 'cause that was never a question with me, it's just, I've got a twelve month view, and I would like a sixty month view.
Do you guys have a five-year plan?
Well, I have one.
I need to update it.
I definitely have.
I, I think, I would suggest you update your five-year plan, that way there, maybe we can use their five-year plan, while they think that their project should be, that we can have those roads evaluated, and, and, correct?
Start out.
Instead of, start off with their five-year plan.
We definitely should have somebody.
Does that make sense to you guys?
In our roads, maybe we need to evaluate not all at once, maybe, okay, you, you say, these five on each side, we feel, and that's who we have them tackle first, something like that?
Yeah, I feel like if you're gonna have somebody come in, they might as well do them.
I, I'll just do them all, yeah. And there's no reason not to.
I, I don't know, I just, I think we could get like really sticky here, quick, you know what I mean?
It'll get sticky quick.
And if we have that SABGO engineering company come in here, and we start drilling, core sampling, stuff like that, I mean, we could be talking like.
Well, at least we know what we've got down the road, that's not your, you don't have to worry about that, but that's something for us.
The unfortunate part about this, okay, I'm just gonna say it, when Wakefield came over here, okay, and they gave us a plan for the bridge, remember how much money we saved?
Yeah.
Remember the numbers we got given to us, estimated? Remember that?
Yeah.
Okay? You can have somebody come over, 'cause whenever you get the state or anybody involved, you might as well triple your number, okay?
Do we have to get the state involved?
Well, no, but at the same time, you know, these are municipality roads. They all go to their state classes. They're all the same. You have them come down and start evaluating your roads and start giving you costs of these. We're going to see our budget go right through the roof.
A million dollars a mile.
I would think that they would.
But at the same time.
To help us out too, though. I mean, and not give you the highest.
An engineer is going to give you a finished road. They're not going to give you a bandage. That's not their job. So, you know, we can accelerate this budget process into millions real fast if we don't watch how we proceed with this. That's what I'm saying.
Well, I gotta tell you, that's what it feels like we're doing. We've gone from two hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand to now nine hundred thousand. To me, that's a pretty big acceleration. I have no idea, I have no idea what the next five years are like. Are they going to continue to grow like that? Are they going to go? I don't know. And I think, if I were a taxpayer sitting at town meeting, I would want an answer to that question. And if that question comes up, I don't think we have an answer.
I think by going, but when I was proposed last week, which I probably can't really do at this point in time because it's too late into the tax season, have them come in with projects, finished projects, start to finish projects that we can vote on, attack, the people will know exactly what they're spending on each road. Why, if they have to have someone who can do an analysis on each project they do, then they can do that, right?
But it's still, it's just a single project. What's the, what's the, what's the concern with having a broad-based assessment? I don't, I don't get it.
You're feeling like if it's out there, it's out there and then they're going to stop.
We can get a broad-based assessment, okay? Then anybody can do their job at that point. Why do you have a road commissioner if they did, what is their job at that point? Going off what somebody else says you should be doing.
Somebody's going to do these projects. I mean, what if you come in brand new? At least we've got something that we can say, okay, this road was done, whatever, three years ago. And another ten years, it's going to need this or, I mean, just stuff like that.
That's all stuff that they should be learning, you know. Have you guys done any DOT meetings at all?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, you know.
We were at one today.
Okay.
Do you?
Oh, you were?
Yeah, FEMA.
Oh, yeah. Well, no, actually DOT stuff, though.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You know, there's stuff that they're supposed to be doing. Now, the biggest problem we have is we have to have a five-year plan. That's part of your road commissioner ordinance, okay? And if we had a five-year plan, okay, then we would know our project in five years. So every year you should have another project set up because you're supposed to have a five-year.
Wouldn't this help the road commissioners, though?
I would think it would.
I mean, I would think, wouldn't this help the road commissioners?
No, it will in a certain way.
Okay.
I think they should be up to them to get the assessments done on the projects so we have feedback while you're doing it. Does that make any sense?
It's not the assessment on the projects. It's the assessment on our road system. And I don't know how I vote on this without that, in all good conscience. I don't.
Then you don't.
Well, maybe I don't. Maybe I vote against it. I don't want to do that. I want to be supportive of you guys. But if I'm having this, I suspect there are various people out there that are having issues as well. And it's, what we're doing is arguing against planning. And I, you will never hear me make that argument. It's always good to have a plan and to go about it in a way that can be transparent and people can understand it because it's not us paying for this. It's the taxpayers.
Yep. Well, we are the taxpayers.
Well, I know, but it's really the taxpayers and we ought to be able to demonstrate that we've got a plan. And the plan is a fairly well-thought-out systematic plan that people can look at and understand and say, okay, I get, I get why it's got to go up. But right now, it's going up simply because we're giving a list of projects that are causing it to go up.
It's our duty. We could right now, if we felt like it, okay, we don't plan on, but if we felt like going through here, it's our job. If we don't feel like this is fiscally responsible, then we start cutting some projects out. We do the one, so.
No, I'm not qualified enough to say that road doesn't need it and this road does.
Our job, our job is to be fiscally responsible.
But if I had some kind of documentation or something from somebody that, do you know what I'm saying?
No, I do, I do.
To help me make decisions, I guess.
I think I'm coming off the wrong way here, okay? I do believe that it would be a plus for these guys. It would make their jobs easier. I just, there's a slippery slope here. Because I've seen all these people who've come over, run over their road commissioners because they've gone to a few DOT classes and made it so they couldn't do their job, okay? Now, at the same time, yes, we're throwing a lot of money out right now. Money that I wish I'd gotten a fraction of what you guys have got. I could have gotten something done. But we need, because if you look at the surrounding town, you take Chaplain, okay? Chaplain doesn't have a road assessment, okay? But what they have is a program. They have two road commissioners that have, they've had the amount of money to work for years. They've always had two hundred thousand dollars to work with. But they, what they done is they turn around and they list off projects. These projects, these projects, these projects. If these projects aren't being done or they're not being done right, they bow them down. And, you know, we can do an assessment. We can spend whatever it's going to cost to do that, okay? I don't want to do the whole entire town because I don't want to waste money. Because if that assessment doesn't help us at all, we wasted thirty, forty thousand dollars for nothing.
Well, I guess that's for the three of us to figure out maybe at this selectmen's meeting tonight.
We should be putting that forward, not them.
Okay.
If we're going to put it, we should put it forward.
I agree.
If we're going to do it, we got to do it.
I mean, they got to participate in it. They've got to, you know.
I would like to have them agree whether or not it's a good idea or not, okay? This is something that's going to affect them one way or another. Because what happens is if there's an assessment that says this road needs more work than this road because it's got more traffic, even though when I'm plowing that road, okay, I'm ripping the road up, how am I going to second-guess the assessment as a road commissioner? You can't. Because the public eye is going to say the assessment said this. He says this. They're the assessor, okay? That's the issue I have.
Well, I would say as selectmen, wouldn't we help them and try to listen to them?
There's no helping after that.
We've got the assessment. I mean.
We got to, it's got to be a joint thing. The assessment could be a good thing, but.
What do you two think?
I mean, I'm fine with it, but I just feel as.
It's going to open up a can of worms.
I feel like we're going to be pushed right out of a job, is what's going to come.
Who's going to do the job, then?
You take a job.
You can't find nobody else who wants to do it. Remember back when I ran? Everybody did.
What I'm getting at, let's say we have the engineer come in. They give us a set of plans, right? He go, we're going to do this million. Here's two million dollars. Me and Adam are not going to do that work. We're not going to start rebuilding roads. We can't do that. We could, but you're going to have to put it out to bid and you're going to have contractors in there rebuilding our roads.
Isn't that what we're doing now, Will?
We're not.
We're contracting it all out.
Yeah, but I'm talking about like you drive down in the city and they're ripping the roads up. We're starting right fresh. That's where I, that's where, I know where that's going. I look at plans all the time for roads. That's right where this is going to go.
I don't think so. Look at.
I think so. We look at everything now. Can we put everything now?
It happened here, though, okay? We had somebody come in and people were really like, oh, jeez, they're going to come in and we're going to have to shut this building down and build a whole new complex. It doesn't sound like, that's not going to happen.
Certain sections of the road definitely, that needs to be rebuilt.
You know, yes.
Lebanon Road.
Yes, there are roads that.
Terribly.
Yes.
Yeah, the problem isn't getting into that road. The reason why nobody's got into that road is because what's underneath that road, you know, the Hopper and Lebanon Road.
Yeah, it's all just.
It's a complete disaster underneath there. You open that up, you could waste a couple million dollars down there.
I guess I have no problem with the assessment, but if, I don't know, it's kind of like RSMS. Like, I think that's kind of useless right now because how's that benefiting me and Adam? We're the only ones putting the information in. So if you, but if you give me a road assessment and just like Dave said, and we go to town meeting and Larry gets up and says, well, this says you guys are doing this. Why are you doing, I mean, why even put a budget together to do a job?
Like county road is a more traveled road than PEC, which it is, but a big section that's gone, that road needs to be fixed before county does because it's going to be a dirt road before we know it.
Isn't it, isn't it, and you're not going to know that?
I think you're assuming that the assessment is going to have a very linear list of roads and projects that need to be done in a specific.
Very may, it may.
It does not have to. It does not have to. You could categorize and say, you could group things into category and say, these roads are in this condition and that condition, and it gives you the flexibility to figure out which ones to do when.
Yeah, but you, but I guess my, the point is you still have a professional come in and tell you at the end of the day, what, I usually do your job, though. That's what it's going to come down to.
Well, let me, all right.
I guess my, I guess my point is like when I was, my first three years of road commissioner, you know, I put my budget in and it would pass. And I feel like the last year and a half or so, it's like, like we almost can't be trusted. You know, we've asked for the money and stuff like that. And like every time we come forward, it's always, you know, oh, we need to go do this. We need to hire an engineer. We need to do this.
It's more tools to help.
I guess it's, at the end of the day, I just put the project I think I need to do and we go to town meeting and we vote on it. You know what I mean? That's how I feel like government always ran, but.
Well, it may be how it ran.
I don't know. I feel like we're, I'm not saying we're getting run over, but I think if we go that route, whatever happens, I'm not saying you guys are going to do it, but I honestly think the.
Well, to me, well.
I mean, I wasn't going to go, I wasn't going to go there. I wasn't going, I just.
I'd not be there, Will, but.
Sure.
But I just feel like if you put that out there to the public and people get hold of that, you know, I think we're just, we're going to get questioned no matter what we do. You know, that's how I feel.
I mean, we're elected to do our job and do what's best for the town.
So is it an open checkbook, guys?
Nope.
I don't feel that at all. I don't even think that's.
You do what's right for the town. So it's an open checkbook and we just fund whatever you ask for?
Nope.
No, you go to town meeting, you vote on it.
Gets voted on by the.
And if the town people vote it down, then we ain't working.
If you guys don't like.
They voted through, then we're working. That's.
We get our two fifty.
I don't feel like it's a fair statement. It's an open checkbook. If it's an open checkbook.
Well, no, it's reacting to the state.
You give us a lump of money, we wouldn't give you anything and we could just go do what we do.
The unfortunate part about this, when you say that statement, that, you know, when you say open checkbook and you say, well, it gets voted in, you're right, it does get voted in, okay?
That's not my problem.
The only thing that's ever slowed, listen, the only thing that's ever slowed down the road commissioner's budget was the select board. In the last fifteen years, it was always a select board that slowed down the budget. We've had selectmen over time that have zeroed out the pavement, okay? Then we have this select board that says only special projects. Then we have select boards that's, okay, we're going to give you this much. We've got a flat line for three years in a row, which is not productive, okay? But at the same time, I want to make sure you understand, okay, that we've gone from ninety-nine thousand and in how many years to two fifty apiece? Okay, to five hundred thousand, we went from two hundred thousand to five hundred thousand in the last four and a half, five years, okay?
Hold on. And when you walked in, it was a million?
Yeah.
That's where you, that was your act?
Originally. Now we're up to six.
No, but it was a million, guys.
Originally, correct.
And so based on what you're suggesting is we should have just approved that and if the town voted on it, that would be fine. And I'm saying, I don't think I'm doing my job, guys.
I don't think that.
Right, because, but what I was going to, let me continue here. Because what I was trying to say is this, unfortunately, I'm not saying the tax, the people at town meeting, the twenty-four that show up, okay? The problem is, is have you ever seen a road budget fail?
Only a few years I've been here.
I have. I've seen it not fail, but be held until certain paperwork was put forward. That was not me, but, okay? But typically, the road budget never fails, okay? So we have, the problem we're going to have is if we put, say, a million dollars forward, there's a pretty good chance it passes, which is good for you guys, great for your plan. It's whether or not it's fiscally responsible for us to do so.
Until people see their tax rate.
Exactly.
And then I think there'll be a reaction.
So what we're trying to do here is we're trying to play a happy medium, making sure you guys get what you want, but we still got to be fiscally responsible.
I started off by saying I could support this budget this year. What I said was, before we get another budget, I'd like to have an assessment. That's all that I've asked for. And so if I could get my colleagues to say, yeah, I think we can do that, I'm fine and I'm ready to move on, but.
Well, I'm not going to agree to something until we do a little research and make sure this is worthwhile. I mean, you know.
Yeah, and that's something we can look into. I think we have.
Not at last minute like this. I mean, this is something we've got to decide whether or not we're going to roll forward with this. This is the last time we're going to meet with you guys, right? Okay, so we got to sit down. What is the final number on your paving?
Total between the two of us or just me?
Just each one of you because you guys aren't the same thing.
Mine's total.
We had to hear a little.
After you take out the carry boards.
Yeah, take out the carry boards. Just what's going to be taxed on taxation, for sure.
Two fifty and one.
Two fifty and one thirty?
Yep.
There's a.
Three eighty.
Three eighty and change. Three eighty.
Yeah, say three eighty.
You're staying at the two fifty?
Yeah, mine's like two forty-five and some change.
So you're at two fifty. I think we're doing two fifty anyway. We're giving you the two fifty. So zero, so six hundred and thirty thousand. So from the original one million that you came in on.
Yeah, we dropped it quite a bit.
In theory, we've raised the paving budget by a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
All right, so now we got to go to wages. Jennifer wants me to take notes, so.
We're going to look into the assessment, see who we can have do it. I have no issue looking to do it.
Yeah, I mean, let's inquire, see what it's going to take.
But I think we've all made our points clear tonight where, you know, we don't want it to go.
We can talk about it at that meeting or something. Okay.
We, we did.
What are the rates?
We did present some new numbers to you guys, but me and Adam have done some talking about it and we'd like to just leave all the rates at where they were last year. We're not asking for an increase in our rates.
So I went through your rates the other day, guys, right?
Go right down so I can, I'm going to take.
So we got, okay, road commissioners, we're going to give you five percent. It's only fair to give you guys five. Am I, do you disagree?
No, not at all. Wait a minute, what columns? Because there was a question you guys.
Okay, so you got.
So tell me what these columns, are they properly labeled?
You want, look at the numbers we're operating on right now. Is it two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three?
That's current.
That's current.
Yeah? And the twenty-three, twenty-four is what?
That was original proposal. Now we've changed it.
Are they listed, is the change listed here?
We were planning on staying right with twenty-two, twenty-three, except for the five percent raise on road commission and labor. That's it.
Okay, so just the.
We're not looking for any equipment raises, nothing.
Okay, so just.
Can you, can you explain why you're doing that?
Because we just, it's easy to leave it the way it is, the way the budgets are.
Because of pressure, you think, from us or?
No, we just.
Because I hope not.
Well, you guys went from twelve dollars an hour to nothing.
Well, because we were trying to change fuel surcharges and trying to work with all that. We just want to leave it exactly the way it is.
If I can make some recommendations here, because I think you're doing yourself a disservice by doing that because we got inflation, we got pay raises, you know, you're guys, you're getting a five percent. You would think your operators, your drivers will at least get a five percent on yours, on the other side.
That's what you said, right?
Well, that's what we're saying, the five percent.
So if we look at laborer with no equipment, okay? Last year, that, was it last year? Two thousand twenty-one, it was making eighteen dollars an hour. Is that last year?
No, that was.
Year before.
Year before, yeah.
You want the middle column.
I understand that, okay? So now that individual makes twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay. When you figure that number, okay, that's what, say, Robin makes, okay, when he flags, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Minus five dollars an hour out of that, what do you got?
Seventeen bucks an hour.
So he's working with seventeen dollars an hour.
What's the five you took out there?
Well, that is for a subcontractor price. That's not adding FICA, social security, where it was called. It's five dollars an hour roughly on a twenty-two dollar an hour individual, okay? So what I'm saying is, this is the, this is the only one here that's separated out as an individual laborer. And I don't believe that because, do you have anybody in your crew that works for eighteen dollars an hour?
Nope.
Or seventeen dollars an hour?
Nobody.
Well, you do if you're paying them as a subcontractor at twenty-two, correct?
Yeah, I believe, yeah, we changed all this. Joe Letourneau made that quite clear many times. I just want to.
I'm sure I, yeah, okay, so.
I mean, he weren't making no money. I don't.
But what I'm, what I'm saying is my recommendation, okay, that you should at least have enough here. What would you hire a flagger for? What is a going flagger?
Oh, I've heard it, twenty, oh, actually.
What's a going laborer?
Right now?
Twenty bucks?
Twenty to twenty-five bucks an hour.
Okay, so you take your twenty dollars an hour because that's a laborer that you're going to have flagging. If he's on your crew, you have to pay his social security, his FICA, all his work, his comp and all that other stuff, state taxes, that's five dollars an hour.
Not state taxes, but that's.
Yeah, okay, you start adding all in, okay? State tax, I need a whole lot, but.
I believe state tax the individual pays, not the employer.
You might be right, yeah, but at the end of the day, you have to, you have to account for that. So say twenty dollars, that's a twenty-five dollar an hour individual, correct?
All day long.
Okay, so why isn't it?
Because we've never, we've never really messed with the labor rate.
Because we're subcontracting out right now, if you do the math.
So people are, subcontractors are accepting that rate? So we're paying them twenty-two and on, with FICA and unemployment, they probably aren't getting health, healthcare, anything at that rate.
No, no.
So they're, they're all in cost because it's double FICA, probably fifteen percent. So if you take twenty dollars, that's the equivalent of twenty-three. And you're saying that you're able to get the subcontractors to take this work at twenty-two dollars an hour?
It's all we, it's all we've offered right now.
It's all we've offered, but you're all, I'm just trying to understand the economics of.
But like, the only time you would charge that out, so like, let's say for instance, like, besides you have that one person flagging and laboring, but everything else, that rate is included in the rate after that.
Yeah, to include in all these other rates.
So it's just the flaggers we're talking about?
That's all I'm talking about.
Yep.
Because if I have one of my guys, we've got five guys out of crew, two of them are flagging, okay? And I'm making twenty-two dollars an hour, that individual, you know, I typically pay them twenty dollars an hour. I'm losing money somewhere down there, right? Right, right? Oh, no, it was something funny. I didn't know what was funny. But I'm just trying to make sure there's not money lost here on that one line. I would recommend raising that up to twenty-five dollars an hour for subcontractor labor. Because that's what it is.
Well, if I could go back, when you said you wanted to hold the rates flat, does that mean your subcontractors are going to hold their rates flat?
They have no choice.
And you think you're going to be able to secure them with no increase?
Won't they expect a raise? Won't they expect a raise this year? I mean.
Well, you guys just said that we inflated the rates the last four years, so, I mean, we just got.
No, we got excited because you came in with twelve dollars an hour and one whack.
And then we dropped it, then we dropped it to five.
Come on, guys.
We're still double percentage.
We're going to have wiggle room for, they need raises just like you need raises and stuff.
The first time we saw this, there was some pretty hefty increases.
Well, we were trying to rework some stuff with the fuel surcharge.
And so we asked questions about it, but.
And then we came back.
I don't know about my colleagues here. I want to make sure people are fairly compensated. And they're ready, so I'm surprised that you would hold the rates flat. Because that doesn't, that's counterintuitive to what those subcontractors are going to have to deal with. Their costs are going up.
That's why I was looking.
And so if you're going to hold them flat, either we expect them to dig deeper into their pocket to do work with the town or we're not going to get them to do work for the town. It's got to be one or the other, right?
I was, I looked at these numbers the other night because I know there's a discrepancy between the twelve and then flower, okay? Now, we have to make an adjustment on the fuel surcharge. I believe that it's going to be an adjustment made to that somehow. No, we should be making an adjustment with this so we can make an adjustment to that.
That's what we're trying to do.
So what I, what I was looking at the other night was, by looking at, if you take any piece of equipment here that burns diesel fuel and has an operator, okay? Each one of those pieces of equipment have an operator. They should be, they should be getting a five percent raise just like anybody else. So if you take an average operator, we just got through a number of twenty-five, okay, as an operator rate, okay? Obviously, I don't work for twenty-five dollars an hour, okay, which is a dollar twenty-five, okay? A dollar sixty.
Yeah, twenty-sixty-five.
Okay, so a dollar twenty-five an hour. And then with the fuel surcharge, right now we're about four dollars a gallon, four what? What are we at right now? Four thirty, okay? So if you take a five dollar an hour increase, you're going to get a dollar twenty-five or just a dollar thirty increase in wages and you're going to get a three dollars seventy increase for your fuel.
But where are we going to cap the fuel at? But where are we gonna cap the fuel at?
What we gotta do is, because we gave a 5 dollar an hour increase last year, we give a 5 dollar an hour this year, okay? What we do is we just take the, um, we leave, we can leave the 430 where it is, but then drop it back to a dollar, okay? Instead of doubling, cause we just added 5 to it.
Right.
Correct?
We talked about that today.
Did you just say 5% if it's a diesel with an operator?
5 dollars.
5 dollars.
A buck and a quarter is hours, is wage and the other 3.75 is fuel.
That buys you almost a gallon of fuel.
Yep.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
That almost buys you a gallon of fuel.
And so is that the equivalent where you're burning an hour?
No, you burn four to five gallons an hour, okay? So on town, that hour, you're gonna get an extra gallon of fuel, close to it.
I see.
Okay.
Keep the fuel surcharge at 430.
And get, and knock it down.
Or back down to a dollar.
Back to a dollar.
And then a 5 dollar.
Increase on the, only the equipment that actually has people running it, okay? Like, um.
Yeah, can we go through so I can check it for Jen?
Yeah, so this is just my recommendation. Two-wheel drive backhoe, four-wheel drive backhoe, they have operators, loaders, okay? The loader base rate, uh, loader in the yard, uh, where is it? Stockpile, you don't. We leave that where it is.
Yep, cause that's just a set thing.
Yeah, set fee. Uh, chainsaw, handheld tools, that doesn't because it, that, that's a separate, is that with an operator?
Yes.
Okay, it is, okay. So, um, but you're not running diesel fuel on that, right?
Well, I would just leave it.
So why don't we just add the dollar 30 for the, the individual who's running it? Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Um, you got all your trucks all the way down through.
The only one you leave is attachment.
Yeah, the attachment, where's the attachment?
The last one.
Right before winter.
The 12.
You don't add, you don't add to the, uh, screen, the wing, um, I'm not missing something here. Attachment, you don't add to that. Just, but that whole line up top, you're right. Then down below, um, yeah, you don't add the wing. Sanders, none of the Sanders you add to?
No.
Just leave those the same. Trying to be fair across the board. Now, all the, the people running the equipment, I'll at least get their raise too.
So what do we just go up on the equipment with the operator? Do we just go up?
Dollar, I think I figured a dollar 30. Dollar 25, dollar 30, yeah.
So the, the back, just to make sure I answered what you just did, the backhoe was 71, 81. What is it now? So everything's going up 7%?
Hmm?
It would now be 77.6. Are you going to go to 25 or a dollar 30?
Yeah, going up 5.
5 dollars.
5 dollars. It's gonna be 76, 61, which is about a 7% increase.
Okay.
I think that's a happy medium between the 12 and nothing.
I mean, we came with 5 the week before, after that.
Well, when you did, it was, it was so many things that were outnumbered, but after that, it was confusing.
Yep, understandable.
But we, I mean, we came back to 5.
How do you feel about these guys?
I mean, that's, I, I wasn't fighting the fuel surcharge. I've called towns around, all around us and they've capped theirs at 5 dollars, so I weren't going over 5, I wasn't going to 6, so this is fine.
This works and we'll get it back down to a dollar. Went up to 2 last year. If we go back down to a dollar with this, will work.
What, what are we paying right now with diesel? I don't even look at the report anymore.
Is that what you said?
Well, what is that, boonies?
I haven't been there.
So that means you're getting a surcharge now.
Uh, no, it's 439.
439?
Yeah, so it's only 430, you're getting fuel surcharge now. Can we?
Yes, at 4.
So what we should be doing is what you just mentioned, going to 5.
Going to 5.
Well, I'm, I'm not now, that's alright.
Is that alright?
No, I'd stay right at 430.
Well, you go to 430, we're still paying you fuel surcharge, trying to get rid of that.
No, it's fine. If I'm, if I'm working, if I'm working for the town, if, if it's been 430 for this long.
But we just gave you a raise. We gave you a raise and then you're still gonna get a fuel surcharge on top of that? That's defeat and purpose of giving the raise.
I mean, if we're just gonna cap it at 5, then fine.
Yeah, cap it at 5, go to a dollar, okay? And then, and you think over 5.
What is it that go to a dollar did?
Instead, we were paying 2 dollars every 25 cents that went over the 430.
Now you're only paying a dollar.
Now, it always was a dollar. Last year, we went up 2 because we were up to 6 something a gallon and this and that. We're adjusting, rates haven't been adjusted. We just adjusted the rates. We should not be paying fuel surcharge right now at this rate or we didn't do our budget incorrectly. So by going to the 5 and dropping the dollar, we should be 5.
I thought we were going to 5 from the beginning, but.
Well, no, we'll, we'll do that now and I think we should be in better shoes, right?
Yeah, we should.
Yep.
Yeah, so what we'll do is go 5 and a dollar. That makes us alright now, we're not paying fuel surcharge.
Okay, so just to recap, we want a 5 here, we want a 5 here.
3, 5 and 10.
Now, 3.
That's what's in your, it, it's in your paperwork, it's in your, uh, yeah, your ordinance there, thank you.
Now, is there, what about the col, you want everything in columns, right?
If, if we have the money to do it, that's.
No, 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 no.
We don't need a, a separate ordinance, I just wanna make sure.
No, no, you wanted, you wanted it broke down, right?
I have it down, will you just put them again?
Oh, alright.
Oh, oh, that other thing that, yeah, yeah.
So was there anything, was there anything else?
I don't think so.
Uh, we've gone over stock, now a stockpile, we might wanna adjust the stockpile. How much are you asking this year for stockpile?
Whatever was saying.
Does stockpile roll over?
No.
Okay, good. Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure, cause we're, we're over 100,000 right now on that account.